He knows it's gotta help back there.
Hey, what about more council?
So how do I know, there we go. Okay, we're gonna start the, uh, the meeting now first, we're gonna stand up please and.
The decisions to apply in the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me introduce the, uh, the board members first, my name is, uh, Ken Pacheco, I'm the Vice Chair of this, uh, CVA. The clerk is Bob Adams, we have, we're full-time members, the Chairman cannot make it, I'll read a statement from him shortly. And the Associate Members is Greg Logan on my left and Zach Taylor, oh Zach Taylor. Is that Durant, Durant, is that Zach Taylor or Durant?
No, it's a Taylor but no Zach.
It's a people, any Taylor.
Steven, well, Steven Tyler.
So let me read a, uh, text that I received from, uh, our Chairman, uh, Peter Carey. Sorry, I will not be joining you tonight, as some of you are aware, I recently had my knee replaced again and only just came home from the hospital. I thought I could sit as a member on the Board tonight while Ken chaired, but I cannot even do that, Ken's aware he will be chairing, good luck and I'll see you in May. Oh, our Chair cannot make it tonight, just recently had, uh, surgery. Uh, our next meeting, which is usually the third Wednesday of the month, I'm asking that it be changed to May twenty-fourth instead of May seventeenth. And I will ent- entertain a motion to change it to May twenty-fourth.
I'll second.
We made the motion.
So I'll make the motion, remove it to May twenty.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
What day is it?
What's that, please?
Twenty-seventh or fourth?
Twenty-fourth, three twenty-fourth at seven P M.
And it is still a Wednesday.
It's still a Wednesday, it's the fourth Wednesday of the week.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're going to, uh, start with new business, in our first case is, uh, case number six dash seventeen twelve seventeen William Street, I'm gonna read the notice in the paper first. Notice is hereby given that the Dyson Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April nineteen twenty seventeen at seven P M at the Dyson Town Hall. Lower level nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyson, Mass. zero two seven one five. On the application of Chris Pacheco, President of Dyson Historical Society, owner of property located at twelve seventeen William Street, shown on Assessors Map twelve, Lot number fifty-three, for a variance pursuant to section six definition, definitions, lot furnished of the town of Dyson zoning bylaws to eliminate access to the property from the furniture on William Street and to accept access exclusively from the parking lot on Center Street, however, the address will remain of William Street. This is case number six dash seventeen, Dyson Zone Board of Appeals by Rosalind Grassi, Secretary Clerk. All interested parties, uh, persons should attend the hearing, a copy of the application petition appeal is available for review at the Office of the Town Clerk. The Assessors Building Inspector, Social Commissioner, Fire Department, Highway Department have given copies of this, uh, as well as, uh, our attorney. I want you to pick three members, however, I'm gonna, uh, refuse myself from this case, uh, you know, uh, for obvious reasons, uh, but we have three other members that are gonna be able to be on this and make their decisions, I'm gonna refuse myself. I'm gonna sit in the audience and I would ask that, uh.
Is it okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, the Dyson Historical Society has recently signed a contract with Greg Logan to do some work at the, uh, the House. Is there anybody here, uh, butters, any board member who would object to him hearing this case?
Is there a common of interest at all under state guidelines for that?
I don't, if, nobody objects to it, I, it's my understanding that he's able to hear the case and, and.
A lot of them objects, okay.
The, the, are you objecting?
No, 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 I was just, I wanted to make, make that aware first.
So, although I'm gonna refuse myself, I've been a member for the, uh, of the society for over thirty years and I just don't wanna be part of this, uh, decision, so, uh, uh, the President will, uh, discuss this case and, uh, can I ask a random question, Bob, can you take over the meeting?
Okay, and I'm gonna pick three members, let's see, uh. Bob Adams, Greg Logan, Zach Carey. Good to have a little you on.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, and you're gonna present it?
Yes, I'm here on behalf of the society, I actually think you have a copy of the septic plan, I think everybody has a copy and I'll be able to explain this to you. Um, the house has its front door on twelve seventeen William Street and it has one little parking spot to the side of the house. What we are asking to have done is to abolish that little parking spot, it's a safety issue, a big safety issue. And because our parking lot has been recently expanded and, um, we have a lot of room there, we're asking that parking be on Center Street, but we keep twelve seventeen William Street as the address for the house. So if anybody has any questions about it or.
I guess my question was, would go to Jim in terms of, you have to access it from your front, I, access from the frontage, right?
Right, our current bylaws state that you must access the property through its frontage, so I don't have the authority to exempt them from it, but your Board does.
Okay.
I would, while I have the floor, reiterate that it's a grave safety issue by having that driveway in this car location. When that house was erected, the cars did not come down Center Street the way they do today. And, uh, quite frankly, I've, I've driven in and backed out and you take your life in your hands when you do that, so it's, it's almost prudent that we, we abandon that driveway altogether, but like I said, I don't have the authority to do that, this Board does, so.
Yes, I'm familiar with the area, it is a steep building, cars do come down, as it is backing out on Center Street, it looks to me to be a better entrance, especially for the type of use you're using it for.
Will that existing driveway be closed?
Yes.
It will be closed, so it will not be access.
It's really a spot to park your car.
Right.
And that's why, and the address is there.
Would be the same in any.
But that will no longer be anything because it's just, it's really not safe.
It actually destructs the, uh, there is no stop, uh, there's a stop sign, but there's no stop light at that intersection really.
No.
No.
Plus the driveway into the existing parking lot off Center Street has been relocated further from the corner. So we've increased the safety and efficiency of that intersection tenfold by doing what we've done. This will just further exasperate, uh, you know, that, it, it'll make things better all the way around.
Any other questions? Is there any butters here that wanna be heard?
And I guess, I, I have one other question, in terms of fire and police, I know we have this issue with developments that if we call a development the Pines, for example, but there are other streets there and if someone calls the fire at the Pines, I assume this wouldn't be an issue, given the address, if, if, for ambulance to go down there and even though it's, the driveway's not on the address?
No, but what will happen is if the, if this Board affirms, uh, the petition in front of them, both police and fire will be notified in writing that if they respond to that location, there is no off-street access. However, public safety officials will tell you when they pull up to a house, they don't pull in any driveways typically.
Right, right.
Still gonna be the same place, same address.
Block the street and, and so.
You're just asking for access to it from a different.
So it won't, it won't impact anything.
Parking, it's basically what you're.
Right. But it's a good question, thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Somebody's gotta make the first motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the case six dash seventeen.
I'll second.
You need to, uh, close the public hearing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You can move, go ahead.
All right, I'll close the public input.
So, I'll make the motion to approve case six, uh, dash seventeen.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have to put down four reasons, I wanted to be noted that it is a public safety issue and that supersedes anything else.
I'll second that, that's exactly what I'm stating, is the public safety coming up and down that hill, that is, that is a hazard.
Yep, me too, and my only concerns were the ones I addressed to the Building Inspector in terms of accessing someone else other than your frontage and notifying the police and fire, so I'm also with that then.
These, I wish they were all as simple as this. Okay, you can have it back, so you're much more familiar than I am.
I just wanna, uh, the petitioner, uh, we never asked the name of the petitioner, although I'm quite familiar with it. Identify yourself for the record.
I know who's.
Chris Pacheco, I'm the President of the Dyson Historical Society.
And the new business we have. I'm getting up for it.
I saw that, that would be country, right? That wasn't money, that was candy, candy could be too.
It was a Tums.
Yeah, Tums, okay, give you a digestion tonight.
So, uh, the second case on the new business is, uh, case number seven dash seventeen four ninety-five, uh, School Street. I'll read the, uh, the notice. Notice is hereby given that the Dyson Zone Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April nineteen twenty seventeen at seven P M at the Dyson Town Hall, lower level nine seventy-nine seven Somerset Avenue, Dyson, Mass. zero two seven one five. On the application of the town of Dyson, who is the owner of a property located at four ninety-five School Street, shown on Assessors Map four, Lot number sixty-six, for a variance pursuant to appendix fee of the town of Dyson zoning bylaws. As indicated in Article number twenty-six of the twenty sixteen Annual Town Meeting to subdivide the property into two lots, leaving the existing Van Gisem Hall building on one, one lot and create a memorial on the remaining lot. This is case number seven dash seventeen, Dyson Zone Board of Appeals, submitted by Rosalind Grassi, Secretary Clerk. All interested persons should attend the hearing, a copy of the application petition appeal is available for review at the Office of the Town Clerk. The Assessors Building Inspector, Social Commissioner, uh, Fire Department and Highway Department has been notified of this event as the town attorney. Bob, can you pick our three voting members?
I'll pick the same three members, Bob Adams, Greg Logan, Zach Carey.
It's just a little bit bigger plan.
I get it, I'm good.
Are you gonna be, uh, presenting the case? Okay.
Mr. Delano couldn't be here tonight, he's the one that prepared the plan for the town. So, Board Members, um, I would just like to, uh, bring your attention to Article twenty-six that was voted unanimously at the last town meeting, I'm sorry, the last annual town meeting, and I'll read it, verbatim. On a motion of Don Hershey and Seco that the town transfer from free cash five thousand dollars to cover any costs associated with the creation of a memorial on a small portion of the Van Gisem Hall property to memorialize the history of the hall as recommended by the Van Gisem Hall Study Committee. That was in conjunction with several other articles that were approved that night to do something with this property, instead of leaving it to decay and turn back to, uh, the earth. So, this is the first step, we, uh, the Land Use Committee has, um, assembled a, uh, compiled a list of properties that we intend to auction. This is the primary property that we intend to auction, that will take some time, take place sometime in late May. However, before we do that, we wanted to make sure that a memorial was indeed created and it was created on town land, we didn't want that memorial created on private property and have some type of permanent easement to it. We've had issues in town with current cemeteries and some memorials where we have difficulty accessing them. This one does have frontage on School Street, I don't know that we do that, but we felt that it was prudent for us to be, retain ownership of that parcel that was created. With respect to the, um, to the variance petition, the building is, uh, the, the property is already undersized, it has insufficient frontage, it does have adequate land area, but it currently has insufficient frontage. Although taking ten feet away from the frontage would further decrease its conformity, we don't have a conforming property anyway. In addition to that, when this property is auctioned off, that buyer will have to come back to this Board depending on what they intend to do with this property. There might be some exemptions in our current bylaws that would allow for this to be built upon in its current status and that ten feet isn't gonna make a difference. But that won't be able to be, uh, that question won't be answered until we have the auction.
Does any, uh, you have anything else you wanna contribute, any board member have, have any question?
So right now, this is going up, the town is taking this over from, understanding it's property for the town, the town's planning on putting it for public auction.
Always owned it.
Okay, we've always owned it?
Right.
And if they leave the structure, there is no issue to come back in front of us, am I correct on that, except for the usage?
The use would be a problem.
Right.
Right, because there's an abandonment of use.
Correct.
Yes.
There is town water, sewage if they do.
There is, and gas, yes, yes. The, the way the auction is gonna be set up, so everybody understands and the people at home understand, is there were two articles that were, that were set in place. One was to sell it in its current status with the building on it and one was to demolish the building and sell it as a vacant piece of property. I was a member of the Land Use Committee and I encouraged and, and quite frankly demanded that the auction take place at the same time for both aspects. So there'll be a two-step auction, we'll auction it off or attempt to auction it off with the building on it. If that's unsuccessful, then we're gonna immediately auction this vacant land and I'm gonna stop the demo process subsequent to the auction if it's sold.
Any other questions?
I have a question, but I'm not sure that that has anything to do with what we're discussing here. It, uh, on the map that you're showing me, it shows that this is all the, uh, Dyson Industries Trust that owns this, is this all part of that, development that's gone through, Malika, what was the name of that, the reported B project?
Alba Crest.
Alba Crest, is that, is it, that for some, this would be the land use people that would be selling it and it really isn't for this Board, but.
I, if you're asking me specifically, I'm not aware of it, that Alba Crest predates me and I'm.
Yeah, but they're the ones that own all that land, it was an issue before about how to bring in the.
They were seeking, uh, right now it's in litigation, it's my understanding, but they were seeking a second way to get in there, if they couldn't get, and we talked about.
But this isn't really anything for us to deal with on this.
Right, we're not, we're not here, uh, for that.
To deal with that, right.
Well, that means they'd be a buyer.
Right.
They may just be.
They'd be a buyer, that's all, it really has nothing to do with what we're doing.
Right.
It's just a, something I was thinking of, who's gonna benefit from this?
Right.
And actually, it isn't gonna benefit anything, it isn't gonna change anything, we need to decide whether we're gonna give them ten feet here or not.
Right. It's a ten by ten area, a hundred square feet, um, we, we feel that that's an adequate size, uh, to memorialize, um, not, that, that, not just the property in its significance, because it was a school, it's also, as you know, the Van Gisem Hall, there's a lot of history there, so. Uh, the actual memorial hasn't really been discussed yet, but there was some discussion about taking some of the building, if it was demolished, erecting something on the, on the property, uh, with maybe some pieces of the foundation, things like that. Uh, but I'm sure we'll come up with something that fits the neighborhood.
Now, town's gonna be able to maintain it and all this, that's why we wanna give it that way.
Right, exactly. Yeah, there are a couple of small properties in town that we're actually having a difficult time accessing, so we felt that if we retained ownership of this parcel, it would eliminate that problem.
Right, to this year.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not a, um, you have, you have a question?
No.
I'm not a voting member on this, uh, case here, but I, I feel strongly that we should be allocating this ten by ten land for a memorial, it was the, uh, proposing on, BFW many years, maybe twenty-five years ago, does it go back further than that, do you know?
Less than twenty, I would say.
And it was the Van Gisem Hall for, you know, the Marines had taken it there between the, uh, Van Gisem Hall.
So it's always been the.
It, it was a school, schoolhouse, uh, so I think it's important that we put that on the memorial that we have access to, that the public has access to as well as the town to, to maintain it. It's an unfortunate building, it has to be torn down, but I suspect it's gonna be torn down and, and sale, but that's, that's a done deal.
We don't know yet, but it's, the mechanism's in place to do that, if that's, if there's no interest in it, yes.
It's always gonna be a W all my life, used to dance, go dances, I see I O dances, it was long, long time.
I saw your name on the bathroom wall.
Can we, can we, can we keep that as a memorial? Did you phone number there too, Bob, or?
Yeah, paste advertised.
Sorry, I asked that.
He had a full party system though, back then, so.
Yeah, it did, it did too.
So, uh, any other discussion?
Mm-mm.
Is there anybody, uh, any public butters or anybody else that was to speak on this?
I'll just speak briefly, I, I think it's a fantastic idea, the, the voters approved that, uh, last year at town meeting.
Yep.
And it should be memorialized, that it was a large part of this town's history.
Great. So I'll, uh, entertain a motion.
Close, close the, the public input.
You making a motion, close the public input, is there a second?
I'll second to close the public input.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve, to, to change the existing lot from a hundred and thirty-eight and a half to a hundred and twenty-eight and a half.
I second the motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, well, it passes. So you're gonna have to wait for it to be, decision to be, uh, written?
Yeah, I, we need to make one, one clarification on that motion. It's going from a hundred and forty-eight fifty to a hundred and thirty-eight fifty.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
So.
You wanna make a motion to amend your motion?
So it's really not too much smaller than the hundred and fifty-foot furniture up there anyway?
Right.
No, we'll change it to that.
One forty-eight to one thirty-eight?
Yes.
Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
He's picked.
Thank you.
Greg, I don't believe you've signed this, this is the decision.
Do you want our reasons for why we.
Oh, okay.
You've signed it.
Do you want our reasons for why we approved?
Yes, I do.
In the interest of the town.
Uh, absolutely, if the voters approved it, have this done, then I of course wanna stand by the voters and I want to memorial, uh, memorialize the town's history as much as possible and I'd like to keep it under as much town control and town maintenance as possible and if it's, rather than having the law go to decay or abandonment or overgrowth, I think that's the best way to do it.
I agree, to its, uh, interest of the town and it's to memorialize the veterans of the show, there were members, past members of that, close.
And I vote for that too as well, and I like the idea that we're gonna be using part of the old structure to make the memorialization of that.
Definitely.
You have, you have all of that, boss?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item on, on the old business is to, uh, review, discuss and act on critical hours in this process of notice. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we made a, um, I made a motion, Bob, we seconded to increase this, uh, uh, collect's pay from grade four to grade six.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And we did it, uh, about a year ago, we're gonna reintroduce that, uh, motion again as acting Chair, I can't make that motion, but I would ask that somebody make the motion.
All right, I'll make the motion, shall we? I'll make the motion, uh.
It's the second one here, it's to increase.
Motion, to increase the sa- the secretary's pay scale from a, pay grade of four to a pay grade six. You need a second.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that? No discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, it passes. And we need, uh, the second.
A reason?
No, we don't need it for this. That motion, the second motion.
I make a motion to increase the secretary's hours from thirty-five hours a week to thirty-five hours a week for the Board of Appeals.
Is, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Presently, our, uh, clerk, uh, works twenty hours, we're asking her hours be increased to thirty-five hours, given the amount of work that she has to do. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, dies out. In the old business, the third item is to review, discuss and act on the pines, uh, with the Bill and Commissioner. So if you.
Sure, I met with the owners of the pines today, they came in to ask me a very specific question, they couldn't be here tonight. Um, so I told them that I was being, meeting with you tonight anyhow and I would bring it up. They intend, as I've said earlier, to close out that project this year, right before the end of the calendar year. Um, which means they have two lots that are being withheld by your Board, as you're aware. He asked if I would issue foundation permits to those two houses, two house lots, prior to you releasing the lots. That would enable him to finish off the road, that way you wouldn't have any concrete trucks, dump trucks, et cetera, et cetera. I do not issue foundation permits. Um, they cause too much, um, chaos in the paperwork. You have to go through the same sign-off process whether you're putting a foundation in or a house, so I just don't see the, the relevance in doing it. So the question now is, I'm willing to give him a building permit for those two properties, if your Board agrees, no certificate of occupancy until you release those two lots. So, the developer is willing to put up two houses on two lots that we are holding. He has everything to lose, we have nothing to lose.
Well.
So, I don't see a problem with it on the town side, we can't lose.
We can't lose.
Has he done any of the roadwork in that area or?
And he's been.
He's, he's holding off on the, on the finish coat and some of the curb and the asphalt work on the, on the sidewalks because of the, uh, obvious, which is, the houses need to be put up.
And, and neither one of those are, uh, affordables?
No, no, those are market rate houses.
So he's met all those affordables in that area?
Yeah.
And he's been very, uh, outstanding contractor.
Yes, he has, he has.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Me neither.
I just won't release those permits without the Board's consent, that's what I'm looking for.
And if he doesn't comply, we're gonna.
We end up with two houses.
Yeah.
Right.
You just said what his last market rate went for.
Right, exactly, so.
You mean just a town to be okay?
I think it would be, he's not gonna lose the houses, I can guarantee that, but we, we can't lose.
No, he's been very good to it.
Yes.
So he's thinking it'll be done before the physical year, year, like, at the end of this year?
Yes.
Are these houses gonna have electricity to them, so they don't freeze with any kind of piping or anything like that, so they'll be all up and running?
Yes, yes. Those houses get energized right after the plaster goes up, so that he can keep reading.
So these are gonna be functional, temperature controlled, he's taking care of all that, why, why this would be enough, right?
Exactly. Exactly, he typically takes three months to put a house up, stop to finish.
Okay.
So, if, if those permits are released within the next two months.
Yeah.
They fall, you know, we're done.
And why are we, I just told them, is it part of the, like, this covenant?
We're holding them.
We're holding it to lots.
In, in lieu of a bond.
In lieu of a bond, okay.
Right, so we're holding them right now because of cost completion.
Upon completion, you'll issue a occupancy.
Right, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we're not gonna release them.
Until they.
Until the, all the roadwork is done, so by allowing him to build the houses, he doesn't have to, won't be tampering with the road anymore, he'll finish the road.
Right.
All the rest of the.
And then we release it and you can, this would be, yeah.
Right.
One more question.
Yeah.
Um, he's not gonna come in front of us again and say, you know, I got a house up, this house is worth this now, you know, the bond's only this, I'd like to get one released, he's not gonna try to do that.
He didn't mention that to me, no, um, but I don't wanna speak for him.
Yeah, no, I'm just stating, it's like, uh, if, if, say he owns a hundred thousand dollars of roadwork and now he's, we'll hold him three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the houses.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, Greg, it's a good point though, um, I suppose if the houses were ready for completion, holding one house wouldn't be a problem, because you're looking at three, four hundred thousand.
As long as, uh, our engineer states that, hey, we're over that, we're good, we'll be okay.
Right. Right. Right, what, what'll happen is, I, I'm suspecting when we get to October, August, October, Peter Williams will be out, do a cost to complete, a revised cost to complete, he'll be pretty much done at that point. It might be a few thousand dollars residual.
That would take you to have the asphalt this year before the plant closes, done.
Right, no, this, this, he's looking to, to completely close out this project before the end of the year, so. Which brings me to another point, if I may.
Do you want us to deal with this?
Uh, yeah, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know how you make the motion in this.
Well, I think we oughta, we're gonna make a motion to allow the, uh, Building Commission to issue a building permit for the, for the two remaining lots and not to, uh, issue a occupancy.
Right.
Permit without our okay, in other words, we're gonna make sure the road is completed and then we'll release those lots and then they, you can give the occupancy.
Upon completion.
Yeah, and I would be asking for that in writing through your, through Rosalind, so if she can do that, I'd be appreciative.
I, I just got a, just a, uh, question.
Sure.
For the, does this have to be voted on by the one, by the members who are on the.
No.
Board for the pines? Okay, 'cause I was gonna say if that involved my dad, if he's not here, the Chair.
No, we can, uh, vote on, but.
Okay.
Uh, you bring up a good point, could you pick three members to vote?
We got, we got a, three members, I'll do, uh, the same thing before, because you're trying to change, Bob and Zach and Greg.
Feel that though.
Yeah.
Well, it's just how we've been doing it.
You've been shunned tonight. You stepped out once and that's it.
So is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Do we have a, uh, a, a number for this?
Uh, the two lots, uh, case number or?
It would be the pines, that's what it is.
Yeah.
I just wanted to.
And you know, offhand, I don't remember what the two remaining lots, but you know, I think I made a lot, so.
I do, I can go look them up.
Well, you can, when you write your letter for the two remaining lots.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Lots.
I can see them from here. They're in pink, they're in pink over there.
Yeah, I see it too.
Yeah.
Any discussion, any more discussion on that, uh, motion?
No.
No.
I'll second.
I think it's, you made the motion.
I seconded.
Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, so we'll have something written up.
Thank you.
Uh, for you and for, uh, Bishop.
Thank you.
You had a second, uh?
I do, uh, be that we're going to be closing this project out potentially before the end of the year. I know we were all in on the last conversation when we met jointly with the Planning Board and Board Select them. I'd like to seriously think about how we're gonna accept these projects. We can get it right with this one, because it's the first one. So I talked to the developer about the, um, idea of accepting the road and he gave me a little insight that eventually the town's gonna end up with a road anyway, based on previous developments that he's done, where it's turned over to an H O A, the H O A doesn't maintain the road. Based on previous developments that he's done, where it's turned over to an H O A, the H O A doesn't maintain the road. So, I think we're gonna be, not that I'm pushing for this, I'm trying to be sensible here, I wanna make sure.
The road's in the specs though, right, with the town?
The road meets the planning board specs, yeah.
Okay, okay. All it would have to be is voted on at town meeting?
It would be, right, but it was in the comprehensive permit, so I think you'd have to have some modification.
Modification, you'd have to come to us and do that.
That particular project also doesn't have, like, a trash, they go in front of their house, the trash gets picked up already.
I believe they're doing that, right?
Mm-hmm, yep, in mail delivery.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we should think about this, uh, in depth, because there are things we don't wanna be responsible for. The, the retention ponds, we don't wanna be responsible for, the bus stop, we don't wanna be responsible for any landscaping in the common areas. So, I think we can work so that we can maintain the H O A, just like the condo association would be. But then we still take ownership of some of the, uh, you know, the big.
The common road.
The road, the, the big one, the road.
I think when we get to that point, we need to have our attorney here.
Right.
Make sure everything's, uh, done properly, you can address other concerns.
Right, I know that we agreed, uh, conceptually, I think, uh, not conceptually, but tentatively, to a meeting in May with the planning board and Board of Selectmen again. So, it might run.
One that's supposed to be is on in Bahrain, so it's moved because of some occasion.
So, it might be prudent for us to say that, you know, we've got one that might be accepted this year.
That would be.
Right.
We need to stop the discussion, get into, you know, some fine tuning and.
While we're talking, that would constitute a major change.
Would it?
I think it would, because of the way it is now, it's part of, all of that is, uh, uh, the snow removal. It, the homeowners association agreement is a very large, just part of the amount of money that they would have to pay in, into it. I don't know how the rest of the board, I'm asking, is this, uh, a major change? Because now, that's gonna fall on the burden of the town, which in the same essence is gonna increase the tax value. Cause they're gonna have to, the taxes are gonna have to be assessed more, because the streets are gonna be maintained, where before they weren't being maintained.
Yeah, but these, these folks here are already paying, they're paying taxes.
Right, I understand, I know, I know they are, but what I'm saying is, part of their homeowners association agreement now is allotted for snow removal. It's not gonna be allotted, so that, so that, their, their amount would technically be less. And that would, to me, constitutes such major change, they all need to be notified of the change, I would think, I mean, that's, we're discussing this here.
I think, I think getting the attorneys to opine as to whether it's a minor or a major is, is important.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that the tax and the H O A thing comes into play.
Maybe it's getting too deep.
Right, um, but that would be obviously for the attorney to, 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 to make a.
We're modifying their homeowners agreement.
Well, it's not been written yet. It, modify it based on the comprehensive permit, yes, I agree.
Right.
The H O A has not been written yet, cause the developers assumed all those responsibilities. So, that's why.
But didn't they buy them, not buying these homes, they knew that there was, had to be a set amount, this, cause you couldn't just blindside these people.
I, I agree, I'm not so sure they know exactly what they're buying into, but I agree.
They all knew. No.
But I think it's early enough, and that's why I'm bringing this up now in April, that it's early enough for us to get this all right, before the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. Very, very true.
So, that it's done correctly. The other thing is, by, by accepting the road, we have a, a pristine road that we now will be maintaining. And everybody knows Tom Ferry does an exceptional job maintaining roads. And it adds to our chapter ninety, uh, receivership, because it's, it's, it's additional road lengths that will cover towards our, our cherry sheet, so. So, you know, it's not a lose-lose, it seems like it might be a win-win, especially when we're in control, we're in the driver's seat.
I don't really have a problem with it being accepted as a town road, cause we all know that it's not, the standards are, are.
Right.
Built.
Right.
Engineered properly. I just, um, my question, is this a major change or, or minor change? Cause if it's a major change, it has to be re, oh, you know.
Right.
It's to be reopened and.
Right, it may, it may very well be, I don't know.
Let the attorney make a decision.
Yeah, I personally don't think it is. The homeowners association, they're actually, their fees will actually be reduced if the town thinks, of course, it's not, it's not increasing, so it's.
Right, it would be.
It impacts them in, in a good way.
And they probably don't even have a homeowners association put together, most people don't, like you and I have talked, they go away.
Well, yeah, but. They, they go away, so that's, that's why I think in the future, we should never, uh, think that a road's gonna be a private road forever.
Problem.
Hmm.
I think we oughta just assume it's gonna become a public road.
I, I'll tell you how much I thought about this, I'd like it to be written to the H O A, that they have to report to this board, maybe biannually. So that we know that, here's the receipts, the retention pond has been, uh, mowed, it's been inspected, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, we, we're not chasing these people for this, you know, we all know what it's been like up to this point. And this is the first one, and I see a golden opportunity for us to get it right, so.
Well, because they gotta maintain that park, they got all that other stuff that they, they need.
Right, right.
Each one of our projects all have something that needs to be maintained, every, every one of these developers, maybe they should all get together and hire, have their own, uh, the homeowners association that have. You know, one person taking care of all of them, like their own ground steward or whatever.
Well, yeah, that, that's up to the H O A, we can't interfere with who they hire, but I, I would agree, it's a suggestion that might be made, because most people may be unaware of what an H O A responsibility is.
They don't wanna know.
And, right, and I think it would behoove this board in this town to br- to invite them to a meeting before we accept it and say, this is what's expected of you. This is what's been negotiated, this is what you're responsible for, we've, we've reduced your fees as much as we can, but these are the areas that you'll have to maintain. And I think it just, it, it, it puts everything out on the, on the table as opposed to, uh, stuff behind your ninety-nine thousand mortgage papers, then you get a proposing.
And I feel like that's, as I've recently become more involved in the whole town politics, is that people, residents want to know, they want communication, they want to know everything they possibly can, and I think that's the best way to go about doing it.
Plus, when you look at the longevity of the town, if we're responsible for maintaining the roads and how they look.